We will call this meeting to order the Wednesday, January seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Please silence your phones. I think I've talked to everybody except the last couple that have come in. We appreciate that very much. And please rise for the invocation and pledge. And Mr. Bill Callong will have our invocation this evening.
Oh, Lord, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the beautiful weather. And thank you for the health of our loved ones. And keep us safe as we travel in Jesus Christ or Savior's name. Amen.
Amen.
Kevin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. George in.
Dr. Mark Solow?
Here.
Here.
President Yanivellis?
Here.
Vice President Cliff Jacobson?
Here.
Dr. Bill Callong?
Here.
All right. Item number two, approval of consent calendar. I would assume you've all had time to review. Have any questions or comments? If not, would like a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public participation. You've got the agenda information in front of you. Please come forward and speak to us if you have something that's not on the agenda.
Well, I'll take a turn at it. Good evening, board and staff. Thank you for this time. I just want to cover a couple of things that have been important to me for a long time, and I think you know about that. And that's about public education. Because as we think about the issue of water conservation and how we've sort of gotten out of the mode of doing a lot of public education about that, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be concerned about it long term. Long term and global are two things that have been in the news for quite some time. We don't do it locally because, you know, the issue of think globally, act locally is what we have been doing. But just for instance, some specifics. Our average in the United States is one hundred and forty-four gallons of water per person per day. In China, it's twenty.
Whoa.
If China used water the same way we do, they would get every drop of consumable water, and there'd be none for anybody else in the world. Water conservation for the people in China has been part of their heredity for over five hundred years because they don't have much. We, on the other hand, are just plain wasteful. So we still have a lot to learn. When you think about the differences of when they started doing some of this research for a presentation I'm doing at the end of the month, there were one point four seven billion people in China, and as of last week, one point five one billion. China is still growing in population, and so is India. India has very little water resources, but they use more than China, about thirty-five gallons per person per day. They have more resources. We recently were reviewing the two thousand and ten updated Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, AB eighteen eighty-one. And for those of us who are doing water conservation issues for the State Garden Club, have reread the update of two thousand and fifteen. And the interesting thing about two thousand and fifteen, the governor's executive order, B dash twenty-nine dash fifteen, still stands. So the landscape requirements are still required regarding water conservation. They were not rescinded when he took away the penalty emphasis of water conservation. When we think of what we've got locally, rainfall, we are at twenty-four percent of normal. However, we expect January and February to be our rainiest months. We are in what's called a DWR pause mode at this point because even the measuring of the snowpack is at less than two inches in most of the places where they're measuring. We don't have a drought condition yet. However, the importance for some of us is, as we look forward, as a water company, our mode of operation has to be water conservation is still part of our life. And as much as I know, some of you think we can make more money by selling more water, we can't lose the concept of us being good stewards of what little we have. Even if you fill all the reservoirs up, we're maxed out at twenty-two months' supply. Two years of drought, and guess where that goes? We're back into a full-service, community-education problem because we skipped the time to do water conservation education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ward.
Thanks, Ward. Thank you. Anyone else?
This is my first time at one of your meetings. I'm impressed. My name is Fred Hofer. I've been a PID customer for about twenty years. But I'd like to talk about my experience with a few of PID employees that maybe you'd like to hear about. Recently, I had a billing issue, and I came into your office, and a lady was very professional and went over it and got my everything up on the computer and got me squared away and figured out what I screwed up. And I was quite impressed. She was professional. She's a keeper. I believe her name was Laura.
Yeah.
I did a little work on my place here recently. I'm always, I'm kind of half plumber. I did landscaping and irrigation up here for twenty years, so I'm always fooling around with something in my place. Anyway, I tried to fix something out there. I got dirty water in my kitchen. I thought, God, God, PID, they were down on Honey Run, they broke into lines again, and they got my air line. And so I'm sure it was their fault. So I came down here, and I found some guy, a nice guy out back here. And he got on the phone, he called some of his service people, and no, they hadn't worked on the lines. Really, I'd done some work, and I'd lost some water, but I didn't think I got dirt in there. But anyway, the guy was very kind. He took time, and he was very professional. He even gave me a cook's tour of the facility back there. I was very impressed. And his name was Jim Ladreeney, Prince of Young Man. Last person I'd like to tell you about, I recently installed a back check device in front of my place. And I had quite a time of it. I got it at the hardware store, and like they said to do, and a guy came out and showed me where to install it. And so I tried, and the next morning I get up, and the thing had blown clear off the thing, waters running down the street. Anyway, so I took it back to the hardware store, and I called Wilkins. And anyway, your man came back out a week later, and it was still leaking. And I thought I'd done a good job. And he says, I've taken apart hundreds of these things before, but let me have a shot at it. He pulled the thing apart. He says, you're missing a washer. It didn't come from the factory. And his name was John, John with a beard. That's who I call him, John with a beard. And he was very nice, did put it all together, and took a lot of time. And then when he's done, I said, well, John, what do I owe you for this? He says, nothing. We give service. Okay, now, that is good. But I have to tell you something. I'm going to disagree with the previous speaker here. PID is a sales organization. It has to be a sales organization, or you're not going to survive. We're dwindling sales. We need to sell more water. Now, I'm not an expert on water. I don't know how much water we got there. But every time I drive up Skyway, the marquee says we got eighty-seven percent more water. I don't think we're running out of water in paradise. We're not in China. Okay? Anyway, even though the man said we're a service organization, we've got to sell more water. And let me tell you a movement that's really swept across the United States. People want to grow their own food. They want to eat what they grow in their backyard. You see on the internet all the time pictures of a front yard where people have taken all the lawn out, and they've got a garden in there, maybe to a chagrin of some planning commissions. But anyway, people want to grow their food. There's a big push for that. That's why there's farmers markets. Anyway, I'm trying to do more and more. I retired two years ago. I've got two and a half acres here. So we've expanded our garden. We're doing more. In fact, last year, we had so much, we gave a lot of food away. And we know some people that want to even buy it and sell it at the farmer's market, even though I don't want to do that. But anyway, we found out as you grow more food, the water bill catches up with you. And you realize that, you know, on my, I use almost, one month, almost eighty cubic hundred feet, and some months, fifty or sixty. So I use quite a bit, a hundred and sixty-eight dollar water bill last one month. But we realized if you grow more food, it's not really cost-effective. I could buy it at Winco for less. So we're kind of at a crossroads. Do we expand the garden and do more? And I realized if I had the whole thing under irrigation, I could qualify it maybe for an ag rate. Actually, I think the ag rate is too cheap. That's seventy-eight percent less than what the rest of us pay. And I don't know if everybody that has the ag rate is really growing much. But we're trying to grow. What I'm suggesting to the board, I think you should have some brackets for people who want to grow into more water use. And believe me, you do need to sell more water. If maybe after sixty cubic hundred feet, maybe you should have another bracket, maybe after a hundred cubic feet, you should have another bracket. Give me a chance to grow into the ag rate. I'm not asking for it because I don't use that much. But there should be some incentive for people who want to do more gardening, because gardening is taking over America, and we shouldn't miss it. We ought to get the local nurseries, the schools, and even the hospital involved in trying to get people in paradise to grow more food. It's healthy. It's good for the community. But yes, it will take more water. And I'm sure that the two nurseries here in town would sure like to work with that. I'd like to work with it. I know you have like an example garden out front. I haven't really stopped to take a look at it, but I'll bet it's zero escaping. It's drip, probably. And drip doesn't use any water, folks. I know. I've installed a hell of a lot of that stuff. It saves water. But do we really need to save that much water? You know the answers. I don't. But I do know you need to sell more. And so I wanted to get that point across. And again, I would be happy to work with you people on something like that. And I do want to know the name of who I could work with before I leave here that could talk to me more about water brackets. Because I really think there are more people like me that would like to grow more gardens. And we need some incentive.
Fred, I think you probably don't remember me, Cliff Jacobson.
Oh, I remember you very well.
Fred put in my entire irrigation system, my forty-eight station controller, and it's been working flawlessly for
We had fun.
Fifteen years now.
Yeah, we had a good time.
So I agree with you. And in fact, you're singing my song about the fact that I respectfully disagree with this gentleman sitting here as well. We conserve the water, but we don't get credit for that. And when it goes over the spillway and goes south, we lose it. It's gone. We don't get it back. Now, we don't capture the water and hold it prisoner. We use it.
As it comes.
And one way or another, it gets back into the ground and goes south, because that's the direction of flow.
Right.
So why don't we use it while we can as it's passing through?
I agree, and make some money on it.
And I would encourage you to take another look at that. If you have over two and a half acres, and you're doing a lot of agriculture, you may very well qualify for that ag rate.
Well, I don't have two acres. I was telling you, two acres. And I'm sure my house and garage doesn't take a half an acre. So but I don't know if I limbed up the trees.
Is your whole lot, is your whole lot, how big is your whole lot?
Two and a half acres.
Two and a half acres.
Yeah, it might qualify.
You qualify, size-wise.
Well, but I really, now, I would be glad to have pasture, because I want to have free-range chickens and goats. If I limb up the pine trees and rake up that, will that be called pasture? Because I understand pasture qualifies. So if I do clearing and make it look like a pasture, and get some chickens and guys out there, that might help?
Please come in and talk.
Yeah, come in and talk.
But who do I talk to?
Talk to Kevin.
Just come into the office, and we, and just tell them that you're interested in the ag rate to see if your property would
Again, I would like to qualify for it. And I know I probably don't qualify for it right now. That's why I think we should have brackets for people.
We'll come out. We can come out and take a look at your property. We'll send somebody out.
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, we, we'll discuss rates in a further meeting, and we'll make sure that you're involved in that.
Okay. The thing is, you did such a good job of teaching people conserve here six years ago with the drought. And this new rate increase is going to be perceived by people as a rate increase. In fact, when I heard it's going up eleven percent, I said, oh, hell, I gotta come back and water. Like this guy. So but in reality, you've dropped the rate a penny per hundred cubic foot. And people don't necessarily know that. That takes a little calculating. You're picking up about five bucks on their bill, so they're going to use less water. So it might be counterproductive. That's what a point I'm making. I'd like to help you sell water. Thank you, board, for the same. Nice meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
By the way, Fred, that's a balancing act that we have to try to achieve between too much, too little, when, how much, and so on. But also, please make sure when you start getting excess produce, you come and come back and tell us your secret.
We don't want to waste water, but we do want to use it. It's ours. We're entitled to it. We don't want to give it to the people down south unless we have to.
And lastly, we like to think here at PID that all of our employees are keepers. So thank you. Anyone else? No, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Number four, staff and billing reports. Review and acceptance of the December two thousand and seventeen staff and billing reports. By the way, I was talking to Mickey earlier this evening, and I'm going to start reading the entire heading of each one of these every time for the benefit of the people on whatever it is, live streaming or something. So if you catch me reading, that's the reason.
Got it. So obviously, we'll answer questions. Jim's here from the treatment side. We had somebody last week, or last board meeting from the distribution side. So if you have questions either that weren't answered last month, you can ask Jim now, or questions within the treatment side. Jim's here to answer those questions. And I'll try to pick up the rest.
I see on page twenty-seven the letter concerning the boat launch facility.
Correct.
And from Leo Lamatina reaffirming that the closure for maintenance was okay. But I had a question about what about our other list of concerns?
Yeah, because we had half a dozen of them at least.
Yeah, they're still, they're still at their legal side. They haven't got back to us on those ones.
Okay.
We did get an extension of the grant agreement with the place of use changed from the boat launch to the other boat launch. And the price for the new boat launch was approved within the grant, which actually was less than the other ones. So that's not surprising. That's with Emily. I just gave it to her actually today. And then, but I don't think there's any hurry to gather everybody together until we have a full package of what their legal has with the other concerns. So right now, we're kind of sitting on it, waiting for them to get back to us in whole before we start.
So this was the easy one, for them to say yes.
It's a government agency. They'll get one item at a month. You know why?
They just gave us an amendment two, which is what you described, when I'm expecting is an amendment three.
Okay.
Provide concessions.
Like I said, one a month.
They seem to be doing that in that mode.
Okay.
See what happens.
Thank you.
Maybe we're a trendsetter.
By the way, the picture on twenty-six was kind of neat of that tree coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was one of the requirements that when we, when they were discussing the dam safety issues, was to clear debris within that stream bed. And that tree was one of the big issues.
Is the stump still there, Jim?
Yes, stump's still there. The real background with this is that tree could possibly cause a dam effect. If lobs came down and backing up the natural flow, which is what dam safety doesn't want. If it backs up and creates a pond effect, it's swirling, it'll cause erosion. And that's what they want to avoid.
But leaving the stump is probably good because it's soil erosion control, no mudslides.
Yeah, I don't think the stump's
Like you said, give and take.
Stump's part of the ground, sort of the conduit of the ground. But it's there.
It's not feasible to get a stump grinder in there?
Well, they, let's see what they say. Let's let them look at it. And if they want to ground them.
That was my only question.
Anyone else? Any questions in regards to that? For B, billing report. Anything on Apparently not. Okay. Moving on to five, district manager's report, written report on various projects.
So do you take action?
Oops, oops, oops. I'm sorry. We need a motion, please. Thank you.
I move that we accept the staff and billing report.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for catching me on that.
District manager report. You have my written report. One thing on the water rights. Next month, Paula Wayland from Wagner and Bon Tior is going to come and introduce herself. I think that her work is going to start picking up. She was brought on board a while ago. So I think that it'd be good for the board to meet her. She's going to do a little water rights one-on-one presentation for you guys, and she'll answer a lot of your questions about where the water rights are, and where we're trying, what we're trying to accomplish with those. You just got kind of a North Bay boat launch acquisition. Well, you got the grant kind of update, and then you'll have more of an update on the acquisition of property or that coming up shortly. Processed water recycle project. We had that kickoff meeting, and Jim probably can update you a little bit more on any of the MPDS permit renewal.
Sammy and I talked yesterday, and he seemed to have some really positive comments, but Larry Hopper may have uncovered some really beneficial changes in our permit, which is what you guys have been saying.
It's what we want here.
And staff have been saying it's going to become more stringent. Well, I must say, his comments led me to say that it's less stringent. Let's see what happens. Okay? I just want to
Thank you.
Let's have some hope.
Good news. Brez design is moving forward. Jim probably can give you a little update on that.
We have a meeting next week to go with sixty percent designs. Sammy was also really upbeat about his graphics and his presentation and the design.
Spillway investigation. Genteris still is working on getting the phase one done. We're hoping in February they're going to have their work. But all their field work is complete. So they did all their field work. And we're actually, we're going through some draft statements that they're bringing back off of it and giving comments back to them on some of the wording in their, in their report. PG&E Centerville will have an update later on tonight for that. District manager recruitment, you'll have an update tonight on that. Retirement plan selection, got pushed back. ICMA has had a hard time getting information out of FTJ to get some of the participant information over to them to send out letters to get information out to the new participants. We were hoping to have education done this month, and at the end of the month, have all the transfer over. We kind of had to push it back a month. So I had a conference call with them last week, and they feel like they finally have all the information. We set up some of the education dates. So they're going to be on site, I believe, the fifteenth, sixteenth, and then another day the next week to give education, sign up all the participants here at the office. And then we're hoping around the beginning of March to have the monies transferred over. So that's where that is. ICMA has been great to work with. They've been very, very good. It's just that they're having a little issue with FTJ. And the retirement plan audit. I will have a draft tomorrow. I just got an email tonight that they're finished up. They went through all of their review processes in-house. And that one, FTJ is actually working very well with the retirement plan audit. And so they've had a lot of success with that. So that's been moving forward actually with a good process. And I should have a draft tomorrow. And then once we finalize the draft of that, that'll be presented to the board. So that's, that's where we're at. It's the state of the district.
Any questions from any of y'all? I have not been ignoring. I look up and see if any of you want to speak at one of these things. I'll try to catch the fact that you're doing something and ask you to come forward, because the public is allowed, of course, to speak at each one of these items. But if I don't see any of you hopping up and down or anything, well, I'll just keep going, okay? Ward's real good about
I won't raise down yet.
Okay, good. Ward's real good about letting me know. So, okay, thank you. Number six, treasurer's memo.
Yeah. So you have my written memo. We're actually in the process of field work for the audit this week. So I've been gathering a lot of information and for them, and making sure that everything is going smoothly over there. So I do apologize if it's not a full report. I will get back to a full report. But I just want to kind of give you highlights of what's happening. Revenues actually are really good. We're right on budget, a little bit over budget. Expenses have been right on budget from where we're going. There's not been a lot of things that have been out of the ordinary by any stretch. Our capital projects are moving forward within a reasonable trend. So things seem to be going fairly well operational. And from, from the revenue side, we did close on our refinance at the end of December. So the two thousand and nine COPs that we had outstanding are now refinanced. So we've, we, that was, that was successfully closed. And so we should start seeing some savings on that. I talked about the retirement audit. That's been going smooth. The retirement plan.
I got a question, Kevin. Does the auditor figure any kind of what I'm going to call a debt ratio? Is there, is there such a thing?
Yeah. We calculate a debt ratio every year, and we, and we make sure that that's part of our continuing disclosures for all of our debt. Our debt ratio, normally, we have requirements of one point two-five is our highest one. And our debt ratio is looking like coming in at this year about two point three. So from, from that standpoint.
Way ahead, yeah.
I see. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yep. And just a little, I'll give a little education. Debt ratio, as you take your net income, you actually add back in your, your interest expense and your depreciation. And then you take that number, and you take your total debt payments. That includes principal and interest, your annual debt service payments. You take that number, and that's your, so you divide your revenues, divided by your debt service payments, and that's how you come up with your ratio. So and you have requirements. If you, if you violate your ratios, you are required to disclose that to your lenders.
Who sets those ratios?
The bond, the lenders. We agree upon those ratios. And there's industry standard.
Yeah.
One-two-five is an industry standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I move we accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. We accept the treasurer's report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Approval of checks, number seven. Approval of general checks, numbers fifty-one, two forty-two through fifty-one, three fifty-one for the month of December two thousand and seventeen, totaling five hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Exclusive, avoided check number fifty-one, four oh four, and authorization of a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of January. The reason I read all of that is not just for them, but so that when you go to make a motion, all you have to do is say a move is read.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
So any questions? Any comments?
I just had a question on about Paradise Transmission. Wes, had a transmission go out or something? It was twenty-five hundred bucks or whatever it was?
Twenty, I had something here.
It's a good question. I'm pretty sure that was our treatment truck.
Oh, yeah?
It was cold. It was jumping. And the operators are driving it, felt it was actually really unstate.
Oh.
I think it took a while to clean it, to sort it out, actually. It was one of those problems, the transmission, and just replicated. I believe it was our truck.
Sounds like it.
So yeah, it's a really heavy truck. It's got a crane on it, a lot of tools. It's heavy and heavy.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
Okay. Sounds like we took care of it. Thank you.
Any of the rest of you? Okay, I've got two on page fifty-one. Kind of a question. Day management corporation, top of the page, radio maintenance shop. Do all, do all of our major trucks, field trucks have, each one have a radio in it?
Yeah, they do. And they were having major issues with them. And I think the town was, too. And what happened was, there was some type of repeater that was working that the guy, if I get this, you might, I was part of, I asked Keith and staff, but that they had the frequency wrong. And so our trucks were not getting the right frequency. So we had to go through and pay for the frequency upgrade or whatever to make sure all the radios work. Because we've had fires in the past. Cell phones become useless.
Useless. You have to have them. Yeah, right.
So it's, it's a, we have a base in, in the office, too. When, back in the day, that was our only communication to the, to the trucks was through radio. So, but we still, yeah, so we still have it. And this was to get it working back to where it should be.
I kind of thought it might have been something like that, yeah, because the police department I'm part of and have a radio, and it's day management does all of ours, too.
We use the same company because we share resources.
Yeah. And then the second question I had was on page fifty-three, towards the top. Ironwood Enterprises. Please, what is Ironwood Enterprises?
Let me see, hold on.
Top of the page, thousand dollars. Second, second item down, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. It's a refund. It's somebody who
I think it's that new dental complex on Skyway. Because I have a long time, so I didn't realize the doctor.
Ironwood.
Yeah, they, it's some type of deposit they had to put in for us to come out and do work. And then once it's, everything's clear, we get, we return the deposit item.
I'm not sure I'd want to go to a dentist whose company was Ironwood.
Must be.
And it, it doesn't matter. So that's where, I saw that it was
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rusty teeth?
Rusty teeth, it could be. The old iron, iron fillings, huh? That's all I had.
I have no questions.
Bill? None? Item number seven, motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the check register that you previously
As read.
Depended.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded.
I'd like
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been Oh, I'm sorry, I've been checking pretty faithfully and I forgot that time.
Last month, one of the questions that came up was a $41 expense for a chain replacement for a chainsaw at Don Sawdore. Making a comparative check between Industrial Power Chico and Ace Hardware here, they sell chains considerably less than Don's. Why aren't we shopping for a cheaper chain?
Well, for one thing, Chico, my guess, would be too far away. You'd pay for the chain three times, but, but what's the quality of the chain? Is it the same chain?
Organs, organ chainsaw, same chain?
It is, same chain, yeah.
Oh, I, I compare same to same, yeah.
Good, because the organs is all I'll buy, yeah.
Each place was cheaper than Don's.
Thank you for that, because I buy from IPP, but I didn't know that Thomas was cheaper.
There's not just examples here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
One way to say, well...
Thank you, boy.
Thank you, no, thank you very much. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Legal Report, Verbal Update from Legal Counsel. Emily.
We have a number of items on the floor session, and so we'll just...
Okay, thank you. Number nine, No Unfinished Business. Number 10, 10A, History of Grants and Grant Writing Services. Review and Discussion Regarding Grant Writing Services and History of Grants With Possible Direction to Staff. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, so this was brought up last board meeting, so we wanted to kind of fill you in on, on the history of, of grants and the grant writing services. So, but there's kind of two pieces here. Here's the, the recent grants that we actually got, and how we got them, and then the grant writing services that were completed through Sherry Lasek, and kind of where those stand. That's, Jim's here, he's, he's got his pulse on, on a lot of that stuff. But we, if you read the reports, you know, we've received a few grants in the past 20 years, and a lot of them were water efficiency use grants. We propped 50 grants for pipeline replacement, and all of those were actually done in-house through, through just us kind of falling on them and then us putting in the applications ourselves and, and being successful with those. You know, I, I'm not an expert in the grant industry. I've heard that the grants have become a lot harder to get in the...
Everywhere they are.
Since we received those last ones, where the experts are, or that's where they're kind of have their pulse on, on that. But we have been successful in the past with, with in-house use, and so I just kind of wanted to give the board that type of background to understand that. And then with Sherry Lasek with Sol, Solver Consulting, she's done quite a few grants. She's done other things for us too that didn't include grants, which is helping with some of the SRF funding projects and different things like that, but, you know, we kind of tried to list out her, her, her opportunities that she's tried to get us, and we wanted to make sure that, one of the big ones that she's put a lot of effort into is that FEMA OES grant, that it changed from one grant to the next based on that we became an emergency area, and so we went, if I get that correct, that we started with a DR...
There's post-disaster versus the pre-disaster. A post-disaster was the immediate needs one, where you're trying to mitigate a declaration of emergency. The pre-disaster is much more competitive. You can see my comment, Sherry and I, in her professional opinion, still thinks we're, have a favorable application.
So, that one still has life.
Whatever that's worth.
So, we went from a pre...
We're that excellent.
We went from a pre-disaster to a post-disaster to a pre-disaster.
Yeah.
That's kind of the, the life of that application. So, the life, the application still has life, and so hopefully the money that, that we've spent getting to that point is not, not...
Kevin suggested we attach that post-disaster application, and I basically told him how extensive it was. Had a whole lot of itemized numbers and spoken words, and pretty quite extensive.
But if you guys wanted to take a look at it, yeah, if you guys wanted to take a look at it, just let me know, I can send it over to you, because there is, there is a lot of work that went into it, so.
Okay, so that's past tense. What about future now? Do we keep going? How much will it cost to keep going? How many more times do we have to keep reapplying? And each time we do, how much will it cost?
So, I think we're, I think on the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on the hazard mitigation grant, we're, we're pretty much...
We're waiting.
We're done.
Okay.
For a, for a ranking process.
So, I think we're good on that one. I think going forward, I think that's gonna be the comfort of the board, and I think maybe the, the best thing going forward with new grants might be looking at multiple grant writers and then having the board maybe select those from that. You guys are new, fresh, taking a fresh approach at it to look at it to see if that might be the way to go.
Yeah, I recently met Kristin Carter for the first time, and she's, what she's doing in her company is impressive, so we're, I mean, when we get some spillway action going, then...
Yeah.
I think we, they have all the background on our spillway stuff. Let's see what...
So, so my, my suggestion is to kind of hold tight and then maybe bring it up coming into the future, that we actually look at a competitive process for any type of grant writing services going forward. So, if that's the flavor of the board, that's the direction that we'll take.
I think that's a good idea.
If one of these had come through, that would offset the, the costs.
Six thousand, easily, yeah.
I mean, one of these...
They'll just take one.
Yeah, one of these will offset the cost of, of them all, so.
What are, what are the chances that even one of these will get approved?
Yeah, the last one, 11.
The last one.
He said pretty good.
What I was saying is favorable, to my comment in the very last sentence.
Eleven there.
But, but truly, nine through 11 is all one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's all that.
That's all one. Yeah.
Do you have a comment now?
Yes.
I think I headed Christine Carter toward the district a couple of years ago. She has her own business down in Durham, at her home, had a real nice lady, and I sold her some pasture and I talked about our grant program, so I'm glad to hear that you've contacted and followed up, because she really impressed me with the kind of work she said she was doing.
Yep. We've given her a little bit of work already. It was on the spillway, but the spillway was such a disaster of trying to get grant money out of them at that point. We're sitting back and waiting for it. She realized pretty quickly that it was, the application was for a project, not a study, and so we're waiting for a project to restart that process.
She'll, we need to construct something with our dams. It's about construction, not...
Well, hopefully we'll be able to couch anything we do in the pre-disaster desperate need of, especially with what's happened at Oroville. All it would take is a little bit of emergency verbiage throughout it that would scare somebody that might actually, who might get grants, who knows, huh?
Who knows? So, that's, that's where we're at with that, just, that's kind of more of a informational item for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Questions from the audience? Okay, I don't think we need to take action. You said it's more information, so...
Correct.
Yeah. Item 10B, Committees of the District, Appointment of Board Members to Committees. Yeah, let me get to my page.
Should we, Dan, can we turn that around? The answer, we're gonna discuss and consolidate committees. Should we not look at that first before we start assigning people to committees?
Consolidation's already been done. The, the item...
It's, right, the item that's coming next is putting other, people from the public on other committees, so, isn't that, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. This, this takes already into consideration the consolidation of the committees.
All right. Yeah, because we did approve it last time, so.
Did, did we leave the, the title Paradise Lake? I thought it was just gonna be Lake, but maybe it's Paradise Lake? Is that...
You just eliminated Recreation.
Yeah, we eliminated Recreation.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's still Paradise Lake, even though we, we will talk about Magalia as well, and, and, yeah, okay.
Yeah. You can change, you can change the names to Paradise Lakes.
Lakes, that's not a bad idea.
There we go.
Just put an S on it next time you're typing this up.
Or Lakes.
Okay, okay. I, what I had was proposing is extremely little change, but I got a couple of changes. Nothing on the administration of personnel, nothing, no change on finance, no change on Paradise Lake, no change on community relations, no change on Ad-Hoc Demonstration Garden. Ad-Hoc Negotiating Committee, I would like to put Ann, me as chairman and Ann with me as a second person on that. Ad-Hoc Treatment Plant Operation, no change. Ad-Hoc Grant Agreement Review Committee, North Lake, even though Mark, you would have done a marvelous job, Ann and I are the ones that were pushing that thing on through, and I'm not sure how that got in there, but, that's okay with you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I've, one of the things that I've done in trying to do a little bit of shifting is also make sure that we're, three or four of us on everything, rather than, even though we will be at the end here, we will be heavy on Ann and heavy on Mark. You guys will have a little bit more than the rest of us, but both of you are retired, so you got more to discuss on, yeah.
Renew, isn't that the reason?
Ad-Hoc, yeah, is that okay? And also, we, we, I think all recognize it, a number of these ad-hoc things are gonna be vanishing in the near future, so. Ad-Hoc PG&E, Cliff is chair, as it states, but I would like to put Bill on that because of his knowledge of the Mi, second person would be Bill Kellogg, because of his knowledge of the Maasene Canal, he's walked it and talked it and worked it for many years, and then the Aqua Joint JPA thing, no change on that, Cliff and Kevin. So, three insignificant changes, nothing, nothing big. That's still, that gives everybody a, you're on three or four things, and I think maybe Mark and Ann, you're on four or five, but the rest of us are about three or four each, so. Did I do that too fast?
No, we're good.
Okay, any comments for, oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we, do we need to vote on that? Action maybe taken?
That's a...
No, it's just by agreement, isn't it?
Yeah, uh, yeah, let me go back to it.
We don't vote on that.
That's the power of the, the power of the president.
The immense power of the president here, gosh, ooh. It's just such a feeling of... Okay, Reappointment of Public Committee Members. Review a Letter of Interest Received from Dave Berman for Consideration to be Reappointed to Paradise Lake Committee. That's 10B2. Somebody want to talk to us about that?
Yeah, this is just part of our policies and procedures that you're gonna be looking at next, that it's required that they, any public members submit a letter of interest to be on there, on the public, to be a public member of the committees, and I believe we only got one, right?
Yeah, we had two public members on the Lake Committee, and Mr. Berman indicated he was interested in continuing, so...
We didn't get one for Sue.
Correct.
So, the rest of the people that are on it, did they have to resubmit, or was it just a verbal thing, or, because they're all...
They had to resubmit, based on our policy and procedure, they had to resubmit.
Well, then what about the rest of the people on all the...
On number five, B5, public members on committees shall be appointed by a majority of vote.
Yeah.
And that exceed the other one? I know when this was changed a couple of years ago.
Oh.
The other committee, the only other committee we had public members serving on was the Water Conservation Committee. But last meeting, when the Water Conservation Committee was...
Was blended.
And then established the Ad-Hoc Demonstration Garden.
We approved the public members then.
The motion made to continue those public members.
Right. So, they're still on it?
You guys can, you guys can appoint anybody you want to a public, as a public member. Doesn't mean, I mean, but normally we ask for them to submit a letter that they want to be part of.
Well, I, going back in the history of the district, we got into quite a boohoo over this at one time, and that's when it came in that they had to write in letters and so forth. Before that, the committees worked pretty well, or the chairman or the other member of the board would solicit committee members, and that's what happened pretty much on the Lake Committee, where we ended up with that, and also on the, the other committee, on the Garden now, but I've asked them to submit letters to the Community Relations for if they wanted to continue, and some of them, like Mike, was very interested, he's the one that's doing the plumbing for the different irrigation system, was interested in, in being included. I'm sure, War, you want to be on the Community Relations?
Well, let's wait till we get there, because we're, that's, that's what we're gonna talk about.
We're gonna discuss that further down.
Yeah, we'll talk about that when we get to the, to the policy.
So, right now, this item, I move to reappoint Dave Berman to the Paradise Lake Committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion out there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, 10C, PID Public Committee Member Policy, Chapter 2.27, Review and Discussion, Discuss Regarding Possible Direction to Staff Concerning the PID Public Committee Member Policy and Adding Public Members to Additional Standing Committees.
Yeah, so this was a concern based on that when we dissolved the Water Conservation Committee, that there were public members on there, and it's been, it's been brought up quite a few times about just public members on any other committees themselves, and so I wanted to bring this forward for the board to discuss if they wanted to add language to the policy that allowed any public members to be any, to be part of any committee, or to be, or if it's up to the committee chairs, or if it's up to the committee members if they would like to have it on there, or if you want to keep it the same, which means at this point, the only ones where you'd have actual commit, public members on the board would be the Lake Committee at this point, because that's the one that actually states in its policy that they have public members. From my standpoint, I think, I think more public on them is better.
More the better, absolutely.
They're always open, so, there's two ways. They're always open to the public, except if it's a Admin or Personnel Committee that's dealing with a personnel issue, but they're always open to the public, so the public can always come, but sometimes when they feel like they're appointed or, or on there, they do, they're, I think their participation is, is at a higher level, so.
Greater, yeah.
And currently, the policy, the Public Committee Member Policy states that the district will advertise annually. If anyone's interested in serving on a committee, that they submit a letter, so we did that through our newsletter...
The newsletter, it was on the right column.
That we didn't have any new public members come forward at that time, so I don't know if you want to...
So, in view of the way we consolidated conservation under Community Relations, I'd like to change the policy for Community Relations to have public members, because we didn't advertise in the newsletter, because we hadn't had that consolidation yet.
Okay.
So, maybe we can put it in the next newsletter and entertain any public members for that committee.
What would be wrong with changing the verbiage in policy to allow for public input on all, any committee? Why just public relations?
Except for admin.
Except for the admin.
Yeah, and for me, yeah, for me, I was thinking of, the Standing Committee should be, have public members, but the Ad-Hoc Committee, I'm, I'm gonna leave that up to the chairs.
All right, then, what is the, what does the policy state in regards to Ad-Hoc Committees? Is there any kind of allowance for public membership, or are they all brief enough that we really don't need it?
Some of them are so short.
Short term, it's not even worth it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Yeah.
Because some, a lot of them are less than a year.
If we want...
At the time the public member got up to speed, it would be over.
Yeah.
But at the end, even Ad-Hoc, you always welcome to attend.
Yeah, yeah, they're all, the meetings are always open to the public.
Everything's open, yeah.
So, their participation is...
In the interest, Ann, of you wanting, and I agree with you, wanting to consolidate and limit these, especially Ad-Hoc Committees that we create that seem to go on forever, I think the more public involvement we get, the longer that committee is gonna try and find an existence, and so for an Ad-Hoc Committee, I think if it's appropriate to invite somebody from the public to it, we would based on what the committee's created for, but I don't think we really need to make a policy on that. I think, like you said, the chair should have the opportunity to say, I think we need[1740.12] somebody from the public on this, let's entertain that thought. But if it's something that's going to be of short duration, and, and we want to dissolve it and move on, and not just create another committee, then...
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I think the standing committees should have public members.
So, the public lakes and, excuse me, Paradise Lakes and community relations should both have verbiage to allow it, yeah.
I'd like to, I think on the standing committees, because I'm making this shift, that we could leave it up to the chair on the standing committees, too. And I'd like to actually get rid of B altogether.
Which is B?
B.
Oh, I see. Yes, yes.
Except otherwise provided as these appointments expire, da, da, da. This, as far as I'm concerned, was put in as a way of limiting public committee members by the board at that time, because that can be used very easily for that. If you use it up to the discretion of the two committee, board members on the committees, that they feel this person has special knowledge and so, to be on the committee, they can appoint them and then bring it to the board with the board's approval afterwards. But I'd like to see B gone. I don't think it does anything, except point out that our newsletter isn't read all that much.
And also, it's actually probably a labor-saving item for George Ann, so George Ann, so we don't have to be republishing, because once a person gets on a committee, they could stay on a committee until the board chooses to throw them off for some reason.
Or some port.
So, that's the point you're making?
Yes.
Is that what I understand? Sure?
And we're saving ink and paper, that's good, too.
It seems like kind of a formal process, and we, and we want it, like you just said, we want public members to come in to our committees, and it's like, this is like an obstacle almost to...
Every year, we have to go through this process again and again.
Well, that's...
Yeah, we want the ones that are on, stay on it.
That's what it was actually put in there for, as an obstacle.
Well, thank you, Bill, for that observation. We could get them to sign in blood, so that you're on this committee now till you die.
Perpetuity.
So, if I'm hearing you right, and just reiterate that instead of B, what B says to have, it states that the chairman of the committee has the ability to appoint with the board's...
Approval.
Approval, any public members on the committee.
Not just the chair, but also the other board members on the committee. So, the board members on the committee should be.
Okay, and then, do you want it that if the board member would like to not have that person as a, as a public member, that they have the ability to then remove that person?
Well, isn't that, isn't there verbiage down below to get them off the committee? I think it can be expected, we need to inherit...
I think that was about the next part of conduct.
Yeah, it has to be.
There's something about conduct.
Public members serve at the pleasure of the board directors.
Yeah.
We don't like a public member, we can dump them.
Yeah.
So, why do we need to have that stated? As long as the board is, as long as the committee is relevant, and the public member on there is relevant, we, we don't really have to have something on there that says we've got to renew them annually, or at any calendar date. We renew them if it's, or we leave them there if it's appropriate, and we rid them if it's not.
But are we changing now the approval of a person wants to become a public member of the committee to just the two directors? Where the two directors bring that name before the board, and the board approves it?
I think that's the best way to do it.
I think it still should come back to the board.
We just voted as a board to approve.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just trying to clarify Bill's statement.
That's the process I'd like to see, because it's open and everything else.
Yeah, right.
Okay. That sounds good to me.
That gives no committee power over the board.
Yes.
So, basically, what we're getting rid of is just having to reapply, reapply, reapply annually. Other than that, it's just...
Just have it as a notice in the newspaper, or on our newsletter. So, most of the members on the committees I'm involved with were come by them either wanting to be on, or like...
Just a verbal invitation from...
Well, I still don't think it's a bad thing to advertise in the newsletter.
There's nothing wrong with advertising, yeah.
Because we want.
Yeah, we'll still, we'll still put it in there.
Yeah, if they never know that we accept public members, no one's going to ever apply.
There's nothing wrong with having it in there.
You're just through word of mouth.
Because I bet you, I'd be willing to, almost guarantee, that the majority of them never came through an ad, they came through personal invitation.
Well, see, some of them are on the fire safe council.
Right, so they just came over.
He's been there for a long time, he didn't reapply, but he missed the last meeting. Some others, I didn't bother, but Kernan is here, he's SP, so on the, he's valuable to be on the lake. Now Doug worked with him to get him on, on the Lake Committee. So, we, so we've reached out, yes, to get committee members we thought would be valuable, public, or dealing with other businesses that have an interest in the lake. And one time, we had a public member who wasn't in the district, she was representing Miguelia, and she quit after a while. But she was welcome on the committee, because she would bring up the concerns of the residents around the lake that are all out of the, outside the district.
That's perfect, yeah.
So, that's...
And this didn't include...
And she'd never see a newsletter from us.
This wasn't including the agency representatives, like Kernan and...
No.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
And I think, we don't have to have it as standing that you notice it. We can direct you to notice it if we feel we need, and we don't have public participation, but there's no sense in having you have to do it if we already have filled that position and we know, you know, or we know we're going to. Seems like...
So, do you, staff want to think about that? And then, of course...
We're going to bring it back.
Bring it back to the next meeting for the, the actual vote.
Emily's word smithing right now, she, I think we have an idea of what you guys are looking for. My thoughts are, is that, do you want it, do you want to only limit it to board members that are on the committee, or do you want to open it to all board members to select anybody? So, let's say, you're not on the finance committee, but you know, you talked to your CPA down the, and they would really like to participate. Can he bring back...
Oh, sure.
Well, you have to bring it to the board anyways.
Person, person.
So, how about any board member can nominate any public member to be on any, to be a public member for any of the committees except the admin and personnel, and that it needs to be a regularly agended item?
Yes.
And it requires an affirmative vote of the board?
Yes.
And conversely, I believe, if any board member wants to bring an action item that they want some individual removed from a committee, that would come before the board, and the board would vote on that as well.
Agended, agendized item on a board.
Absolutely, yeah. That, that gives no committee power over the board, and it makes it fair across the...
Yeah, seven cents.
And that is D, because it says, public members appointed to a PID committee serve at the pleasure of the board directors. At any time, the board may choose to remove a public member of a PID committee by majority vote, so it's already there.
This was added because, I won't mention the quote, but he'd written a couple of letters to the press and got them printed, and said he was a board member of this committee,
and the directors, several of them were quite upset about that.
It wasn't me, I didn't care, but that's why that was put in.
Okay, that item is covered, yeah.
I got a question, Dan. Okay, so let's say we get a, we have it in the newsletter, we're soliciting for public involvement. Okay, we get a call, and someone just calls in the office, okay? So, you're saying that a board member still has to nominate that person?
No, their name would come before the board, then.
Okay, so you would just bring it before the full board, okay?
Just like Berman.
Come to the committee first, and then have them more.
But you would not advertise annually, you would only advertise if you had a slot.
A vacancy.
Whenever we chose.
As needed.
Whenever we chose.
Doesn't have to come to the committee.
Yes, yes.
Well, we hardly have any public board, committee members, so...
But we're going to add some this year.
We hope.
That's the way it worked in the past, but I'm not arguing one way or another.
Well, I think if, if somebody wants to serve on a committee, and they send a letter or call Kevin, he's going to bring it to the board, and I'm sure if nobody on the board has a problem with it, or, or the majority doesn't...
Well, I know, but in the past, I'm just saying the past, if you want to change it, change it. But it would come through the committee and then go to the board.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is that the committee members are familiar with what they have in the way of board members.
Right.
They'll know, maybe this person they wouldn't want, so it could be handled very quietly in the committee, and have, they tell them they can come, but, you know, you have to tone it down or do something else. We do have people that take advantage.
But, but then the board doesn't see who you don't want them to see, or sees only who you want them to see?
I don't know if anybody's going to be turned down.
I don't know why we would turn somebody down.
The precedence is there.
Oh, it's...
Not to make a big deal, but...
I don't want to talk about it anymore, because I know I've spent about three hours of my life going over this with the previous board and all of the jersey and poor product and...
So, we're going to remove that one item, and...
We'll keep it an open process.
Yeah, that's good. People want to come, we'll take them.
We'll table this item till next board meeting, and we'll bring it back with the words that we're hoping to get in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Dan, are we tabled the item? Is there still public participation?
Sure, of course, absolutely.
Go ahead, Ward.
I want to hear from the public.
Yes, thank you. What I'd like to do is just a little history lesson here, because some of you are new. About six years ago, I was invited by Director Duncan to attend a meeting he said the public had never attended. So, I did. And he commented in that meeting, this is the first time somebody from the public had actually attended this meeting. Later, Director Hunt complimented me on the comments that I made, and the items that I had pointed out that there was a question about. And then also said, we never get public members to come to most of our meetings. I think strongly that you should be advertising to have the public involved. The absence of that, like in past history, sort of makes you people working behind the public's back. That's not what you want. You want the public to be in on what you're doing. Remember the top box on the organizational chart? It's the public, then the directors, then the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward.
Thanks, Ward.
Ward, I always call two or three or four people before every meeting and say, please come, we need you, we want your input, come.
I do, too.
And you know how many of them come?
I know.
That, that might mean one thing, is that we're doing an adequate job, because when they turn up by the hundreds, that means we've really made a mistake.
Yeah, so, the record's up to the day, only three to one.
Yeah, that's right. Now, who did that be? Okay, D, 10D. Statement of investment policy. Review and affirm continuance, delegation of investment functions is provided in PID Rules and Regulations, Chapter 14, Investment Policy.
So, I'm recommending no change. This is a procedural thing that we affirm it every, every year.
Every year, yeah.
It's actually something that's not, it used to be required by law, it's not required by law anymore, so it might be, I might be coming forward with some changes that, unless there is changes that we bring up for it. It's run by statute, to be honest, so the government code limits your investments to, well, you can see at the objectives, that's statute, safety, liquidity, yield. So, yield is your last thing that you're looking for when you're investing, where, you know, if you're a risky investor, you're looking for that yield. They don't want you to be a risky investor. We're limited on term, five years. We're limited on how, the rating of, the credit rating of our securities. We're limited to how much percentages we can have in certain boxes. So, there's, there's a lot of limitations, and this just basically states that throughout the document.
Why would the district not attempt to provide the highest return?
Risk.
Well, but within guidelines...
Within guidelines, why would you not, why would you even need that last...
Only a moron, yeah.
I think we're going to invest our money for...
The worst possible, yeah.
City of San Diego ruined it for all of us.
Yeah, that's right.
They had some really risky stuff that they were making some good stuff on, and then it went down, and they didn't have funds.
That was Orange County, cost the finance director, he was getting written up nationally, a great job, he was, two years later...
Bankrupt.
In jail.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll all remember that one for a while.
Yep.
So, if there's any other questions, I can answer them. If not, it's just affirming the investment policy. Reaffirming, yeah.
Any more questions at all, from anybody?
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion to reaffirm the continuance and delegation of investment functions.
Is there more? That should be out of it.
As provided in the PID Rules and regs, Chapter 14, Investment Policy.
Oh, okay. As read.
What page are we on here?
I'm just on the front page.
Oh. Yeah, just page two.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved, and secondly, we accept as reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 10E. District Manager Recruitment. Consider setting two special board meeting dates for the following items. Kevin?
Uh, George Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Actually, so I've been hands-off on this whole thing.
Yeah, which is...
That's good.
That way it should be, yes, thank you.
So, you probably read my memo, the next steps in the process, and I spoke, the closing date was yesterday, and I spoke to Richard today, he's going to send an electronic version of what's on property of all the applicants. They have a rating matrix as well, that they're, you know, using as a guide.
So, not, so not a printed binder, it's going to be electronic?
They're going to provide a printed binder, both, as well.
Okay.
But I don't think, he was expecting, the last minute, a lot of people applied, and so, like, we went...
Really?
The only update I have, we have seven candidates, and last week, he said, he thought, he wasn't at his office, but he goes, I think we have two or three more. Well, today, I asked him, so how many, what was the total candidates? And he said twenty-seven.
Good.
I think he was expecting that, but in the last minute, so...
Whoa.
It's brochure.
Brochure.
It's going to take him a little bit of time to process through.
Sort through it all, yeah.
Yeah.
He's going to give it to me, he was hoping to do it today, but probably going to be more like tomorrow. And then...
So, are we going to try to not set a date now, and wait and see what he comes up with?
You're still going to go?
The standard, we can confirm the candidates that you would like coffee associates to prescreen. You know, it's going to make the process a lot quicker.
Okay.
I think if, as far as the interview date, I thought if we could select two days, like an alternate date, in case we can't meet that first date, we have an alternate date as well.
Yep.
So, the first set of dates were in January, that's the week of the 22nd?
Right, but that's next week, so I don't know.
All right, true, it seemed like it could build you that fast, does it?
I probably won't, he thought, like, at the binders, the end of this week, that I...
Do you want to go for the end of next week, like Friday, the 22nd?
I think we probably will have to, so you, so the board has time to read. I mean, I'll, I'll email you...
Yeah.
Those will be the full resumes?
Pardon?
You'll be emailing the full resumes?
So, we'll have all 27, they won't prescreen and just give us the prescreen ones?
Yeah.
Usually, they prescreen.
Oh, yeah, because it's...
They do a paper screening, and they, and they will weed out those that don't meet the qualifications.
They should.
Yeah, Virgil Hales applies, well, we don't want him.
You shouldn't be looking at all 27.
You guys don't know who that is, do you? He's the marijuana guy around town. He applies for everything.
And then let the board...
No, that's not usually how it goes. They usually prescreen, in fact, in the contract, it says they prescreen.
That they're supposed to.
I think you recall that they would do a, a pre-screening.
Yeah, they do a pre-screening.
Give you everyone that passes the, the paper.
Are they saying they have twenty-two additional that they've already pre-screened in?
No, it doesn't sound like it.
It sounds like that's, that's the total, it sounded.
The total is twenty-seven applicants.
Twenty-seven total.
Before pre-screening. Before pre-screening.
Okay.
So, we'll see how many get past that.
Might it be wiser for us to wait, and then you do like you normally do, give us three dates on the, on email, and then we can all chime in and say we can make it on such and such?
Yeah, let's wait, let's wait until they have a pre-screen list, and then we'll decide.
In case he can't.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it by email that way.
Right, 'cause I mean, I know just from the first step, there was, yeah.
'Cause honestly, I, I don't wanna, I don't want them to send me twenty-seven resumes.
Either, either.
If only seven of them are qualified.
That's not why we're paying them twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay, so let's do that. For the next step.
You all understand, she's just gonna wait and see what they say, and then email us, give us options on what dates we can meet, and we all chime in and pick a date. Yeah, 'cause it might be a week and a half, might be two weeks, might be two and a half weeks, we don't know.
This is a new experience, there isn't one of us around the last time.
That's right. All right, all right.
Then do the same thing for the, you know.
Yeah, then the eight-hour one.
Correct, yeah, same for both of them, 'cause I think they're both gonna be, have to be concurrent, so. All right, so we have general agreement, general concurrence, okay, thank you. Anybody from the public, Ward, you wanna speak to anything on this? Okay, thank you. And let's get my ducks in a row here. F, November Board of Directors Meeting, Consider Canceling, you, somebody wanna call Kevin and tell him he can come back in? Consider canceling the regularly scheduled Board Director's Meeting because of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Actually, I would like to see it moved to the twenty-eighth of November.
Oh, passed it, not forward, but back, or forward, not back.
Yeah.
And, and I don't care, it could be either.
I think probably a good point, 'cause some people will go out of town and come back, yeah.
Well, but the fourteenth would be a week before. I have a conflicting meeting that night, but it doesn't matter, so.
Twenty-eighth?
No, not, yeah.
So, we're talking about the, moving the Thanksgiving meeting to a different date in November, and I was proposing November twenty-eighth. It's on page eighty-five.
I bumped it a week ahead instead of a week back. Does that make?
I'm in town.
I'm sorry?
Well, I was just, I'm in town.
Yeah.
All year.
George Ann, does that pose any kind of monthly problem for you, like, difficult to get something worked out, or?
Did you say the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth of November, instead of, instead of moving it up a week earlier to move it.
Move it back.
After Thanksgiving.
It'd be the fourth Wednesday instead of the.
Yeah, just that one month.
Um, how are we?
Maybe we still have three weeks till the next one.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe you could send out a shout to remind everybody that the meeting's been changed too, 'cause by November, I'm gonna forget, and I've got it auto-recurring in my outlook, so I'll be a week early.
Well, we'll be talking about it, I'm sure at the prior meeting, we can remind everybody, though.
So, I'd like to move that we change the date of our November, November Board Meeting from November twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, to November twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen.
What day is that?
It's a Wednesday also.
Wednesday, okay.
Second at.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, ele, am I missing anything?
Committee report.
Eleven, Committee Report.
Bill.
You have a report for us there, Leonard? Yeah, Mr. Kellogg, you have anything on the garden committee?
Ann keeps some minutes on the meeting, I'll, I'll just add if I think something's been passed over, or something. She does an excellent job of taking minutes at the.
She does all the work.
Really?
Thank you, Bill.
Everybody wants you on their committee, Ann, because you do all the work.
And what about the community relations part?
Oh, oh, okay, I thought we were gonna discuss it, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, we can go to.
Wasn't much, so.
Well, the Community Relations Committee met, and I didn't actually, I just have my scribbly notes, because I thought Mickey was taking the notes in that, but she's not here tonight, so.
Well, if you can synopsize.
All synopses, right. Okay, we wanted to, we talked about highlighting an employee in, in one of the spring newsletters, you know, highlighting one of our district employees. There's been several articles in the past newsletters, which were really nice, I thought, and since we got some kudos tonight for our employees, we'll, we'll keep that going. Okay, next newsletter, we wanted to, we actually talked about soliciting public members for committees, we talked about that, and so, it sounds like you, the board's in agreement with that. Okay. And we reviewed the policy for district public committee membership, we talked about that, did that tonight. Speakers Bureau, we talked about Speakers Bureau. We haven't had a lot of requests for speakers, or we haven't made requests for speakers, vice versa, but we've been talking about it, so there's an opportunity there.
Speakers for?
Speakers Bureau, I don't actually know the history of the Speakers Bureau.
So, it'd be more of, of one of us going around and giving talks, and we had specific topics that we were gonna focus on.
Public.
Kind of a, around the community type of thing.
I'd like to get on the list for being a speaker, and most of this was handled by George in the past, so, and Kevin had did a couple, I think, didn't you? So, certainly, anyway.
You're at the top of our list already.
Yeah, there you go.
For, for what it's worth, that's terrific, and if we start contacting organizations, you know, just all of them, all the women's clubs, retirees, the vets, everything, the senior center has done this, and I've gone out and given all kinds of presentations, and it is wonderful, you know, they love it. They have to fill their slot every week for somebody to speak to their organization, and they love to have the opportunity to have PID or any organization.
Okay, you got it.
Is that so?
Yeah, okay.
And that's good, it'd be good for all of us to be represented.
Absolutely, I think it's a great idea.
Need any training, we have the Toastmasters.
Toastmasters.
Okay, uh, let's see.
How did they talk at the Toastmasters?
Oh, we, we talked about.
You're welcome, and at a meeting anytime.
We talked about our emergency preparedness plan, and we talked about a mock drill in the district at some point, sometime during the year, we might have a mock emergency where the district employees would, you know, respond, they, they would know ahead of time that it's, there's gonna be a mock emergency, but we would put things into motion, just as if it was a true emergency, so.
Does they have training in the field, guys, for fire? 'Cause I know we, in the past, we've talked about using our equipment in a fire, and the other one was, we've used, in a heavy snowfall, using our trucks with blades on them, and then, I think there's, do we have any drills up at the water treatment plant at all, Jim?
For fire?
No, for chemical spills.
We, all, every chemical delivery, we have a check sheet, and we go, we've learned through all kinds of safety procedures with every delivery. So, really drilling every time we have a chemical delivery, we're doing following procedures. You know, we have containment, we, we have bottles, and we have ways of dealing with a spill, so.
But everybody's well-trained in that?
Yes.
That's, that's part of their AB twenty-one eighty-five plan, they have to be.
Okay, I, I don't know.
Plans on all that, part of my business plan to the county and all that.
Part of the group of filings.
And we are, we are gonna alert the public, that's the, that we're having a drill, so that we, that has to be covered quite heavily, so that they don't think that we really have some catastrophe.
When you're talking about this, are you speaking more about, like, a disaster if we were to have a breach of water, or a loss of power, providing water to our district customers and that type of thing?
We were gonna, we were talking about like tabletop exercise, and some type of, of disaster, or some type of, of breach, or something.
Probably like contamination in the, in the transmission system somewhere.
Something where we'd have maybe like, almost like a boil water order, where you'd have contamination, and you have to set everything in motion to let the public know.
That's a good idea.
I wrote everything, everything's been written.
Jim's our author, so.
Okay, good, you're prepared.
I have secrets to keep, I have a plan I'm running it for five hours, it's for staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, so we're not gonna involve the public at all?
We're, we're only at the orientation.
State of the.
We never, orientation means.
Oh, so it is truly a tabletop exercise?
I call it orientation and tabletop.
Okay, thank you.
And it's in that room, it's gonna be for five hours, it's a lot that I will be facilitating.
Okay.
Hopefully, I don't have to talk, I'll facilitate, and.
So, you've got the game, you've got the game plan.
I have this much training in emergency response, I have been acknowledged with awards in my past career, and I have written all the plans, and.
Fantastic.
Good.
Done all the table, I've done functional exercises and simulated exercises.
Good.
And.
So, we'll try to, we're gonna do the tabletop, and then maybe the next step, we'll try to get a little more.
All right, thank you.
I like to challenge them.
All right, well, keep, keep us posted on that.
Okay, we will.
We also went over the service, excuse me, the customer surveys, we do, we do give out customer surveys, I guess when someone has a repair order, is that?
Service request.
Service order. Service order, excuse me, service order, and then when someone is on standby, so if there's a standby call, call out, then we give them a customer survey response form. In other words, like, we have, we have a service person on call all the time.
Right.
So, if we get something after hours, and note, you know, to go out, then we give them a form to fill on. So, we went over those, those, and they all looked pretty good, there was one that was, one customer wasn't too happy, but.
But if we get an unhappy customer, we make a personal visit to that person to see how we can correct it.
Yeah, we made a, there, there was a follow-up made to that, to that customer, so. Uh, let's see, we talked about customer relations training for staff, and we're talking about providing some.
Providing some too, and so, we're.
In the past, before this was, you were doing this, it actually revolved into each board member in his division, if there was a problem, they would call you and ask you to go check it out. I did that several times, even when Doug wasn't able to, I checked one out in this neighborhood, and so, it was done that way, it hasn't been done for several years since then, but it, just to tell you a different way, it could be done if you want to, because it has been done that way in the past, so.
Okay, the one positive of that is they see they're a board member, yeah.
That's very true. Thank you, thanks, Bill, good suggestion. Um, let's see, we also talked about assessing community knowledge, Tanya had some ideas on that. Um, annually, do an assessment of, you know, the community, in other words, is our message getting out to the community? So, we talked about, talked about that. Um, talked about possibly using various sources for that, Chico State has a survey reset, research center, and that, you know, is basically is free, so we wouldn't be spending any district funds for that, but we could, we could possibly do a survey through the Chico State Survey Research Center, which is students, you know, and I've used that before when I, in my former employment, and they did a great job, so. Anyway, that was kind of it, I think that was the, the meeting in a nutshell, and set the meeting date for, I don't have that down here, but.
February eighth.
February eighth, was it? Okay. February eighth.
It's after next garden, maybe it's March eighth for us, March eighth.
Oh, March eighth, okay.
February eighth for us.
And in regards to what you just said, Mark, I've used Chico State senior students for projects, I have one that did Solid Cat drawings, and is gonna do 3D printing of a prototype for me, and they're extremely inexpensive, extremely knowledgeable, and.
Ambitious.
They've got great backing, they've got tools that they're, they've got resources that we all pay for in our taxes, and we should be utilizing them more, especially having networking with Chico State in areas that relate to water, water quality, environmental, those types of things. You'd be amazed at students that would want to be affiliated, just to get the knowledge and the experience as they go forth, so we might wanna strike out a better, you know, better relationship with Chico State.
That's a, that's a great idea, and we actually did talk about, in our meeting, I forgot, I didn't have it written down, but we talked about internships, and internships, I don't know if we've done some in the past here in the district, but internships are fantastic, you can get a student, a grad student, or, you know, someone in their senior year, come up, work for the district, they, it's a win-win for the, you know, the district and, and the student.
A lot of big companies in Chico do that all the time, Smuckers did that with individuals that went on to become major managers in the Smucker Corporation, that simply came there as an intern.
Intern, that's great. So, we did talk about that, so, yeah, good ideas, we'll, we'll bring those back to, to the committee. Thank you.
You, you can get, the senior center has had probably half a dozen over the years of these kids from the university, and almost anything you want, you can find down there out of some department, and they just love doing it, every, we've just been thrilled with everyone we've had, whatever we've wanted, they come up, they, tons of time and paperwork, and like you said, access to data that's phenomenal, that.
They're eager to learn, they're eager, eager to do the homework for you, all the legwork, and.
And it's, it's a, it's a feather in their cap.
Yeah, they come back very happy to show you what they've done.
Yeah, it's like, wow. They could put it on a resume down the road.
That's, yeah, we at the senior center have done that, written them letters of recommendation.
Definitely a win-win.
That's, that's all I had, unless you have some more questions?
Thank you, okay, Paradise Lake Committee?
Okay, I had some notes that I hastily put together at the end, before I came to the meeting tonight, here, so I don't wanna pass this. Let's see how many I have before I.
Thank you.
Ran out of staples, so there's clips on there. Thanks, you chime in on this one.
Okay.
So, we met on the ten, did you get, did you get it? Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry, the public, I didn't get this together till tonight, so, we had a good meeting. Do you wanna, do you wanna go over it and talk it, talk about it, Bill?
No, you, you go ahead, I'll, I'll do just what you've asked, I'll chime in.
Oh, okay.
Because it was, it was a long meeting, and quite a bit of discussion about some of the items we're gonna talk about in the whole session.
Okay, so we started off with, we had Thad Walker from Buick County Resource Conservation District, gave a talk about, a PowerPoint talk, and he had some really great drawings and trail maps, and showed the proposed trail from Magaly Reservoir up towards Paradise, Paradise Lake, and so, Chad noted that there are state and federal grants available that we could possibly obtain, at least, at least we would apply for them, but.
Just to correct, it's Thad.
Oh, Thad?
T-H.
What did I say?
Chad.
Chad, Thad.
So, you wrote it Thad, you know it's spelled right.
I, I probably didn't pronounce it right.
Okay.
Okay, Thad.
Thaddeus.
He was very, very informative, and very enthusiastic about the project, great resource, for sure. Um, he explained also that we could have feeder trails coming from the pines towards, you know, that would interconnect the trail, and that would, of course, provide more access for folks in, in those areas, provide more recreational opportunities. Um, let's see, he also said, of course, a side benefit of having a trail, and Bill can, can talk about this a little bit, but it is that, you know, there are some, you know, homeless encampments in the area, and to have the public on a trail would most likely help to kind of keep the, the encampments from being created.
Yeah, developing.
Do you wanna talk some more about the trail, or show the map, or?
Just give people an idea, start down at the water treatment plant, and it would end up here, this is old, right away, in the past, we've talked about utilizing that, he talked about coming from the canyon, going up to our park, which is right here, so, he was very enthusiastic, and talked about all the intricacies, he also gave us some prices, he talked about, we're making a survey and planning this, would be approximately six thousand dollars, and it's just raw estimates, and he talked about the whole thing, being constructed, might be as much as eighty thousand dollars, but he emphasized the grants and everything, he's walked the trail, the proposed trail, Greg and.
Wade.
No.
Killings were.
No, other.
Jason, Jason.
Jason, both of them endorsed the idea of the trail, because it would be responsible, there'd have to be some bathrooms put in, and some other things, but the trail would use the road, it'd go up above the road, is what he's proposing. Um, that's the road that goes up from the water treatment plant to the diversion dam, the pipe around the Magaly Reservoir, wouldn't be used, he said, that's too boring, you wanna have them have to walk up and down and over the hills. And then, one of the, somebody in the audience turned in, they thought it was a good idea, because we've lost all the trails on the E G E Flume, just recently, slow but sure, so, they said, well, yeah, the people in the community would use it, Wade also said we could charge for it, there's no reason we can't, so, it might be a place where we could offset some of the maintenance costs and so forth with actually fees going up there. We might be able to use some, some areas near the water treatment plant for some parking, not a great deal, that's part of the problem, we're parking down the beginning, or the end of it, whichever way you wanna look at it, and then going up to the, of course, there's plenty of parking up at the lake, so, and he had a lot of enthusiasm, so did I.
What type of trail are you talking about? What type of trail are you talking about?
A walking trail, this one.
Dirt?
Dirt, yeah, dirt, maybe some gravel on places, it'll go up and down, and it has to be designed for the, no washouts.
No bicycles?
No, some people want to use bicycles. So, we talked to others, both would work. And then people just stand off the side and then they go, they didn't, too excited about.
Equestrian horses.
No, no horses and.
No dogs?
No ATVs.
What, what the?
No.
What's the rough length of that?
No motorized vehicles, yeah. No motorized vehicles.
What would the rough length of that path be?
It's about two miles.
Two miles?
It's surprising how close they're two lakes.
Yeah, okay.
Go a direct route like that. You go five lines around here, but it's only a couple of miles.
It'd be nice to have a bike riding trail all the way around both of them. Might even be something we could get some better funding for.
We don't own the property all the way around Paradise Lake. So, on one side, we don't own enough to put a trail in there. That's why the trail isn't moving. So, that, that was, we have a lot of enthusiasm, lots of questions.
Very great, a good presentation.
I'd love to see a trail.
Kieran, wasn't that about a three to four foot?
Four foot, four foot. Be a whole bandage trail.
Yeah.
Apparently, no, it's because of S P I. He, he had his two cents. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, it's, it, it was a good presentation, and like I said, it'd be for, for trails up on the ridge. And I like the idea of networking with other trails, too, so.
You know, he was aware of those, for Service Property, he really popped, he had to get all the things first. One, excuse me, he felt that that was a futile thing, in that being.
Yeah, we had a couple of fellows from the Paradise Pines Association here, and they were very enthusiastic. They, they have, I forget how many miles of trails they have there in the pines, but they have quite extensive trail network. So, this could feed into that, it'd be.
Well, as I get more into riding the bike, I'm, I'm beginning to appreciate that we went to the coast for the New Year and we rode up and down on bike trails there, and it was a really nice time.
Right.
We've got to have more of these.
Whenever my wife and I travel, we take our bikes and we just go everywhere on. It's, it's great.
Great. Then we discussed, let's see, a customer had, we received a letter and a customer had requested that free day passes be made available to district customers, okay? So, we, we had a discussion about that, and we noted that there already are two free fishing days, and that's in conjunction with Fish and Game. State Fish and Game has these two free days. Jim, you can speak to it. And we, we coordinate with that, the same, same days. So, we already have that. And then we also have, there's a 25% fee reduction for customers for day, day passes? Is that right, Jim?
No, for annual.
For annual, okay, for annual passes, I'm sorry. Twenty-five, they get a 25% reduction.
Is that currently?
Currently.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I think we, we kind of decided, the committee just decided to publicize the two free fishing days, you know, and kind of get that out there. And we just kind of left it at that, I think. We, we didn't.
We, we already do hand out free days at events.
Or at, at various events? Okay.
This is one spot we'd probably like the Community Relations Committee, because you're doing that kind of work, to take over.
Sure.
Free passes and so.
Yeah.
Publicize.
Do, do we offer the lake facilities to groups like schools and things like that for, without a fee for encouraging?
We do.
Okay.
We don't charge them.
Do we, do we get much participation from groups up there?
Comes with waves and goes up and down.
Is that something we need to reach out better with?
That's a good idea.
Are all of the organization and groups in, in our community aware of that?
They probably aren't. I mean, I'm just guessing, but.
We have standard events every single year. There's adventures, Triathlon Adventures, it does a triathlon kind of a thing. We have a run, and there's one other event that come back every single year.
Who, who are they sponsored by?
They're, they do it themselves, organized individually. And they, they're well, well-run, and we have to get permits from Forest Service and such things, and kids fishing.
So, if the board's interested, I met with, we had a meeting with Lauren Gill and then the new town, or Parks and Rec Department manager, I believe his name is Dan.
Yeah.
And after the meeting, he did send me an email thanking me for the meeting, but it was over the sign, it was over the, the reader board that's out in front, because we partner with him on that. But he is interested in talking with us and partnering with use at the lake for Parks and Rec and for trails at Park, that they were interested in trails up at the lake for the Parks and Rec. So, we could set up some type of joint meeting to figure out, maybe if we can come up with some joint projects, maybe some promotion of the lake through their, through their organization and maybe having some events up there.
Taking school classes up there would expose kids to that area that would promote them coming up more regularly.
So, we, we can discuss that further if that's the pleasure of the board. I think he's, he would be a great resource. He seems to be real, real eager to, to really promote, so.
He, he came to one of our meetings, we had that one meeting at the lake itself, and Dan Isaf was there.
Oh, he was.
Yeah, so he got a tour of the, of the lake and the facilities.
And he's, yeah, he's, he's interested in.
Yeah.
Using those facilities for him, so.
Right.
After we completed that, I took him over to the proposed botanical garden thing.
Okay.
And it's also a park, if they ever get some grant money, be able to do something with that, but that's.
Great.
And, and on our committee, we have Park and Rec District Representative Steve Rotherwick. And Steve pointed out that the trail would work as a thing that would keep the homeless out, because you have the public using the trail. And he was, what do you call it, eyes and something else, he said?
Yeah, you're right.
Eyes and ears, go ahead.
No.
Eyes and ears.
Something else, but President, I guess that's how Park and Rec has got their problems with the homeless camping out. And of course, we want to keep the water as clean as we can, so.
Good. Then we talked about, there was an idea of having a four-by-six metal sign at Paradise Lake, having the heading, "Look What I Caught at Paradise Lake," and people could take their picture, kids particularly could take their kid, picture next to the, and then it could be posted on social media and good PR for the district. So, we discussed that, but there was, it didn't, it didn't get a lot of enthusiasm, I don't believe. And, and Greg Dobbs pointed out that we're going to put up a bulletin board, and he said, why don't we just put some hooks on the bulletin board where you can hang a fish and you can take a picture, and we'd have some kind of a heading there on the bulletin board, and you could get the same effect without having another big, you know, four-by-six metal sign.
You know, they're talking over three thousand.
That's kind of where we ended it. I think we decided that we'll get the bulletin board up and see how it goes. And then Mickey Rich gave a great presentation to the committee on the new proposed drone use policy. And basically, the drone use policy is just for the district employees, just for the district use only. And it's, it's patterned after the J P I A, which we are a member of, their drone use policies. We basically, pretty much verbatim, if I'm not mistaken. And then she, she suggested, we don't have to have a drone use policy for the public up there at the lake, because we have enough in our current regulations, lake regulations, to protect the lake with, you know, with, through our policy, protecting wildlife, protecting the lake. And so, I believe the committee basically agreed with her suggestion that we wouldn't, we wouldn't draft a public drone use policy.
And in our drone use policy, there is a public portion that just says you must go by F A, F A A regulations. So, however that goes, you must comply with that.
Okay, so, okay. So, so we're not, we're not going to inhibit the use of drones at, you know, up at the lake, but we do have the ability to restrict it if, if there's a problem. Uh, let's see, then we, okay, we had project updates, and Dave Berman, he was trying to get some seniors, the seniors at Paradise High have a senior project they have to do, and his idea was to get them to do a senior, a poster project for Kids Fishing Day. And he, unfortunately, there was no, there was no one that was interested in doing their project for Kids Fishing Day. But he's not giving up. He said he's going to keep trying to get some, some interest. So, then Greg Dobbs discussed construction projects, got Paradise Lake, including a new front door at the residence up there, the caretaker residence, and new floating barriers along, near the spillway, near the dam.
That's still back at the.
Oh, is it back, is it back?
Right.
Okay.
Very, very back.
Very, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, it was second.
Long story.
Okay.
That property behind that.
Okay, okay.
Judges, it was.
Okay.
There's a story.
Okay, so we have to have barriers.
Thank you for that, Jim.
We have barriers for a certain property owner, right?
Do work or have done work for the new inheritor of the ranch. This is really not our property that belongs to the ranch. And the barrier you're talking about goes here. And it's, it's, somewhere around my work, there's pictures of.
Yeah, the orange.
And then turnbuckles, and I'm in.
Great.
The same, Greg was saying that weren't practical, we put down here for the dam, right, Jim?
They're not, no, it's too complicated. The bottom line is that when the lake gets really full, people can get back into private property, and that's real, so we really keep that barrier, it's a really solid barrier. Property owners, like they're really have, historically have had a real problem with the public access to our lake if it gets full.
Is that the Vander?
So, we need to use more water.
Vander.
When we're full.
The Vander River Ranch.
Yeah.
Good and poor relations with them, but on the whole, I'd say we have good relations.
Greg, Greg did note that the log boom near the dam might need to be replaced. Is that?
Uh, there's refurbishment.
Refurbishment, okay.
I would think. He mentioned that the other, last month, that it's just a matter of fact. He did recommend using the.
Okay, okay. And then he noted, Greg also noted that lake permit sales were down slightly from last year. And then the Kids Fishing Day, you, was it, did you go to that meeting, Jim, with Buick County Fish and Game for the grant?
I gave the presentation.
You gave the presentation, right.
$3,000.
So, we're, we're asking for $3,000. We didn't get the full amount last year, right? We.
$500 last year. We haven't got the full amount for many, many, many years.
Okay.
Maybe 10 years ago, we got $3,000, but the commission generally doesn't have much money to go out full amounts. We'll see.
Okay.
Find out in February, first week in February. We always get money. They love funding fishing days, it's three events in the county.
Great.
That's getting funded.
Fantastic, thank you. And that was it. And then the next meeting, we set for Wednesday, February 14th.
Okay, I want to talk about Sierra Pacific. We deliberately had no cost, that's going to be covered in the closed session. We didn't talk about what, how the prices Sierra Pacific's putting on the land. Kieran came tonight, and if you'd like to ask him some questions about the land, we're talking, talking about up to 25 acres, two or 25 acres, no prices to be spoken about. And what has happened a little bit, Kieran, I'm sure isn't going to talk as much as he did the other night, but could you say a little bit, you've come, and take advantage of, you know, and see what your suggestions are?
It's okay.
Because you won't be loud in the.
Is that something? Could I, could I interject here? Is there possibly some of this that may, that should be in closed session?
I don't know what this is, so.
It's nothing that's not going to interfere with closed session.
This is to do with?
No, I understand, I just don't know what.
I, I've read the rest of the agenda, and we deliberately closed out the money on it. Kevin and I talked about that before the meeting, and so that's the way we proceeded in the public meeting. And I just, for the, whatever public we have, and that, let Kieran talk a little bit about it, because there's no way he's going to be talking in a closed session.
Are you guys going to take a break before closed session?
Probably not, because it's going to be in three or four minutes.
So, so why don't we, why don't we say this, at any point that Emily feels something is amiss, she just shuts.
Yeah.
Sorry, Captain.
You get bleeped.
Kieran, I had you in here, my report, I just skipped that paragraph or some crazy.
For the public, my name's Kieran O'Leary. I'm a forester for Sierra Pacific Industries on the Sterling District. So, I've been with the company, this, come this March, will be 23 years. I've been on Sterling District for 22 of those years. So, first off, I like to say that Sierra Pacific has a really good partnership with, with PID. This goes back, I've served under three district managers. The first one was Jack Bean. I don't, I don't know if you, any of you know him, but I know he, he was instrumental in helping out with the, with the cementing that, that boat launch at Boat Ramp Number One. So, I'm not sure if it was grant money or if we helped out with contractors, but that was 1999, so probably a lot of you guys weren't around. But, anyway, so, kind of what, what, I'm not sure if, if the full board is caught up with, with what's been going on with Boat Ramp Number One?
I think that we're aware of what's occurring in regards to Boat Ramp, yes.
Okay.
But it just looks like there's an interest possibly in SPI's offering additional properties, and so that's what you're going to talk about?
So.
I guess I would just say that this is a general, it's a committee report, so the discussion should kind of summarize whatever was shared at the committee meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll keep it to that, then.
Thank you.
So, right now, in order for Boat Ramp Number One, that project to move forward, we're, I should back up here a little bit. It, it, basically PID had purchased three acres from SPI last year to move forward with, with this project, and PID owns that, that property. The problem is, is with, with Buick County, the planning department. So, what they're saying is you need, in order for this project, in order for this lot line adjustment to take place, where this three acre gets absorbed into PID property, you actually need five acres. And I'm, I believe the reason being is the parcel, the SPI parcel is zone, I know it's zone timber production zone, but it's also got a.
You know what, I'm going to interject for Emily. I think we, I think this is probably not appropriate.
For a couple of reasons. One, we have a closed session agenda item, and two, I don't think that this discussion itself is agendized in the, at all.
Okay.
So, I'm, if it's a conversation that you want to have, I think we need to get it on an open session agenda.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll just report, because you say it's not agendized, but it is agendized in the committee's report.
Yeah. What, what I'm giving you is public information, you know, zoning, the way parcels are zoned right now, so.
No, I'm not, I'm not worried about that. It's a closed session, I'm just not sure that it's, it's going into a deeper discussion than I would have expected for the committee report.
Okay.
But by the way, we are aware of what the transaction in regards to the B L M, up the boundary line modification, how we have to meet the requirements of the acreage. So, we know that.
Okay, so you're caught up on that, so.
We are, yes.
All right, that being the case, and I, yeah, like I said, you, you guys need to handle this under closed session. Before you do go to closed session, though, I'd, I'd like to speak in private with Director Kellogg.
Can I make one more comment? Would it be appropriate for this gentleman to update us in closed session prior to or not?
Sorry, no. Um, we're giving direction to your representative as to when we can.
It's too easy for you to slip and go on questioning.
Yep, mhm, yep, yep.
So, I'll, I'll meet prior to.
Kieran, we do appreciate you being here. We appreciate your work.
And thank you for your participation.
And we do appreciate the relationship you, you mentioned.
Glad to be here.
Thanks.
Glad to, sir.
Thank you.
And you are right, SPI has been a great partner for a long time, and it's terrific. Okay, thank you for the reports. Board education, was Mickey going to, oh, I'm sorry.
Is it board education?
No, that was, I'm, I'm done. My last module was presented last meeting, so I'm done with my part.
It almost looks like, was it something Mickey was going to do?
She, um.
She was here and then left.
I believe the intent was just to provide information to the board, as you know, it could be helpful if it needs.
There is information in back, yes, we did read it.
And is that on page 88? That's what she's?
Yes.
Oh, this stuff, okay. Oh, this stuff? Okay. Okay. Got it.
Thought she might just want to talk to us also, but if she's not here, then we will, we will proceed.
About Paradise Garden, Ann, were you going to report on the Paradise Garden Committee?
I already did.
Oh, yes.
I, I just, I just included the notes and I would be happy to answer any questions, but I don't think there.
It was in there, yeah.
Yeah, we did that first, that one first.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear any. You got, my hearing wasn't getting any.
I got a comment on that. Great job, it's looking fantastic out there, so how about that?
It's taking shape.
It's a volunteer on a committee.
Yeah, and it's a team effort, for sure.
I honk every time I go by and wave at the people working, so it's neat, it's neat. Any other questions, comments from y'all? Okay.
I did have a comment on board education.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, please, yes.
We didn't do that.
Well, I asked about it and I didn't.
And I wanted to start with, too, a comment about another employee, whose name has already been mentioned, and that's Greg Dobbs. I see him regularly at Fire Safe Council meetings. He, he's not just there representing PID, he is a contributor. He has worthy comments while there. So he represents PID very well. And it is an important element, because as far as Fire Safe Council is concerned, our watershed, our management around the lake is an important part of our community, and he represent PID well. But I did want to comment here about board education, and I'm wearing my hat, you can see. I, I think that this is one of those important times when the five of you, wherever you are anyplace other than here, you are still representatives of PID. And you should all be able to speak intelligently about all the great things this organization has done for 101 years, because that's really the history here. It has always been a very successful and great company. We make very good water and we deliver it well. Those are the two things we're supposed to do and we do it very well. But it does depend on your education as board members, as to how you represent that. I have this hat as part of the, being on the Love Paradise Committee, one of the founding members there, I have a shirt too. I can go almost any place in town and people will ask me about it. I carry the brochures with me, I can hand them out. I can be three counties away with this hat and somebody will say, what does that mean? And I get a chance to talk about that. It's one of those things that we do as members of our community to represent our community well. And that's something as board members that I think is important. Being educated about that is probably the element that I like to speak to most. For instance, the Fire Safe Council has spent 20 years educating their people as how to communicate with the public about what's important, defensible space. That's how you save life and property, defensible space. They're not going to stop that element of their education. The town of Paradise in the last 18 months has worked through all of their staff, as well as the board there, the council members, on why it's important for our town to have a sewer. Now, I don't necessarily agree with them, but they have worked educationally to get them all to be able to talk intelligently about why this town has to have a sewer. Several years ago, our school board was disappointed in feedback they were receiving from parents, because there was no or very little parent involvement at school board meetings. Well, that's changed drastically because of all the complaints they received. Parental participation at school board meetings is much higher now, maybe 10 times higher than it was 10 years ago. It, much more so. And parents feel much better about how the school board is acting, because they're there getting information firsthand. That didn't happen before, mostly because I, my personal opinion was, a lot of the school board members didn't feel very good about how good the school district was doing. So they didn't speak very effectively about that. That does make a difference and it affects everybody in our community when there's sort of a sour note about the people that are in charge and don't speak bell, speak well about what they're in charge of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ward.
You, Ward.
Thanks, Ward.
You are a great PR person for Paradise.
Just on this educational topic, it is on our website. Please, if you haven't gone, please visit our website, it's fully, it's new, it's transformed, it's very easy. And we also now have reoccurring payments for customers, so they can set, put their credit card in there and set it for whatever date they want and it'll automatically charge their card for their bill every month. So it's new, new items that we're constantly rolling out to customers, so check it out, give us your feedback.
May I put my bill on your card?
It looks good, I've already checked it out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I thought it was great.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, item 13, director's comments. Bill?
The one thing, when we changed the name Paradise Lake Committee and knocked out the recreation, the two speakers that were, that came to our committee meeting were already on the way. And I think it's a mistake to take the recreation part out of it. The recreation at the lake is, pays Greg, part of Greg Jobs and, and Jason's work up there. If you look at the expenses on it, this, a couple of years ago, this was a long-term debate and we raised the rates at the lake and they haven't changed since then. But a good deal of their cost is covered by the recreation. And their basic job is security and safety. It's like one of the stories Greg will tell you, is at the fire in 2008, he had to chase boaters off of the lake, because the helicopters were coming in and collecting water. So here he's out in the, one powerboat out on the lake that we have and was chasing people off and so forth. So the security and safety and then the recreation part, Greg is known as a tremendous teacher of people for fishing and he actually owns fishing records up at the lake. So that's part of the recreation, of course, the kids' day and all of that. So this business about trails and we'll talk in closed session about the expansion of property possibly, all have a recreation edge to it.
It wasn't, it wasn't the intent of the consolidation to take the work of recreation away from that committee. It was just to consolidate water supply, the lakes, the water supply and recreation and everything to do with the lake into one committee. So you'll still be doing, I just took recreation out of the name, so I could encompass water supply, or we could call it the Paradise Lake Recreation and Water Supply Committee.
I just knew.
No, are you asking that it be placed on the agenda for the next meeting?
As long as we.
Are you asking that the committee name be placed on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, I guess so. I just, yeah, Ann can come up with a.
Or else we just understand that it's still a part of it.
It's, it's there.
And that's what we approved. But we didn't approve that.
Yeah, we don't want to discuss director comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's all right. I, I just, so if you want to have that discussion.
Yeah, we put it on the agenda, thank you. Yeah, put it, Georgia, on the agenda.
Why can't we just concur that it never did change? It's still part of it.
Work is still.
What's changing? We're not, why add anything to the agenda when it's already part of it? It never left.
It never left.
That's, the, the problem is because we don't want, director comments are made to be a comment by the director, not a discussion.
Oh, okay.
That's where we're toeing the line.
Right.
So that's why we're asking, Bill, if he wants discussion within a board, then it needs to be placed on the agenda.
You don't necessarily have to change anything, but the discussion itself needs to be agendized.
But we're, we're in agreement that there's no, there's no change, yes.
Don't try to be efficient.
Okay, sorry.
No change, no change.
My turn?
Yes, your turn.
Okay. So, changing gears here, I would like to just let the board know that I'm investigating and will be bringing for future action, the, and I also want to charge Emily with some research, but I am very serious about the potential of our district working for profit on the customer's side of meter in finding leaks with our new find leak detecting equipment and proposing to repair those leaks and guarantee them, so that we can generate revenue to help PID and eventually lower our rates to our customers.
Didn't we already ask her?
We.
Thought we already asked you to.
Just, just by my comments now, this is just not a discussion. But I, I've been doing, just want to let the, I want to let, I want to let everybody know that I have been doing research on this, as, as far as what's going to be required to make this happen. I'm going to be bringing it to the board. And I would like, in between now and the time that I bring it to the board for Emily to, I'd like to challenge you to tell me why we can't do it from a Prop 218 standpoint or any other legal thing that would negate us going after that potential revenue stream for PID. That's my comment.
Good. Mark?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just want to say happy new year to everybody. I'm really looking forward to this new year, 2018. I feel, I'm feeling pretty good about it and what's happening on the board here and I hope we get more public input. Fred, thank you for coming tonight, of course, Ward, you're here, but it's great, great to hear what you said tonight. So just looking forward to this coming year and we're going to work hard and do our best and, and see where it takes us. So that's my comment. Thank you.
No comments.
My comment would be kind of continuing what you said last time, looking back on what we've accomplished last year, what you guys have done with your knowledge of water and so on. It has changed the board significantly. You've done an outstanding job and I agree, I concur. I was going to keep going and saying, look forward to a good, positive year, you guys are doing super. Okay, it is 8:29 and we are going to closed session to review the two items listed there. Do you want, I don't think I need to read them, not enough people here. I do, okay. 14A, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two subdivision D of section 54956.911, potential case. And then 14B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation paragraph one subdivision